I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrating position, please. Also be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, ATT U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. The City of Gaston, this meeting of Gaston City Council will now come to order with Chair of the City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
President Tolles is absent today, and the meeting is being chaired by Councilman Cannon, Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Councilman Reed is also absent today. We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of life. We thank you for the freedom to assemble here today. We pray for your wisdom and knowledge for the council with the decisions they'll be making. Thank you for the mayor and his administration. Just pray that you'll continue to keep your hand on him and guide him. And God, we just thank you for all your blessings on our city as we try to move forward. We won't always agree, but God, our focus should be on you and the eternal life that your son, Jesus Christ, provides. We thank you. Ask your blessings during this time in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Mr. Harbison Dayford leading the invocation for us. Prayer is one of the most important things we can do. We can pray for our city. We can pray for ourselves. We can pray for our council, our mayor. We can pray for this rendering situation. There's just a number of things we can pray for. Just always keep that in mind. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session City Council meeting held on July the 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of the accounts for the week of July the 2nd through the 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. No proclamations today. Unfinished business. We have none today. That brings us down to number nine, a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Forest Cemetery Board. This resolution reappoints Marsha Brooks Kendrick for a term expiring April the 5th, 2023. It appoints Dr. Lloyd Miller for a term expiring April the 5th, 2022. Joni Sledge for a term expiring April the 5th, 2023. Barbara Reed for a term expiring April the 5th, 2024. Patrice Mosley for a term expiring April the 5th, 2025. And Joe Intercash for a term expiring April the 25th, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Are there any discussion? Bein' no discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
That brings us down to number 10, a resolution appointing and reappointing members to the Forest Cemetery Foundation Board. This appoints Marsha Brooks Kendrick for a term expiring May the 28th, 2025. It appoints Pudd McArthur for a term expiring May the 28th, 2022. Dr. Lloyd Miller for a term expiring May the 28th, 2023. Barbara Reed for a term expiring May 28th, 2024. And Joni Sledge for a term expiring May 28th, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion about this? Bein' no discussion. Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
This brings us down to number 11. This is a time and place to provide an opportunity for the public comments regarding the City of Gaston application for a grant through the Edward Burns Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program for the year 2021. Local association, the amount is for $35,458, and proposal use of the funds is for the purchase of a new x-ray system for the bomb squad, with all the assistance and for education and training in NIBRS compliance as required by the Department of Justice. The Edgewall County Sheriff's Department has opted to defer funding from the grant due to the joint special operations agreement for the Gaston Bomb Squad to assist in all potential explosive incidents within Edgewall County. The City of Gaston Police Department will receive a total amount of allocation. Is there anyone who would like to speak about this?
Mr. President, I just want to, if I can just elaborate real quick for those who don't know. This is basically a joint partnership with the Sheriff's Department and the City of Gaston. The city gets an x-ray system for bomb disposal. They can come on site and x-ray a package and see if it's got a bomb inside of it or not. And then the, I think that either the city or the Sheriff's Department is getting some $4,500 in miscellaneous supplies, wire cutters, tube snake cameras, to be able to look inside certain places to see if there's a bomb there or not. It's all for the bomb disposal units, and they work together. The County Commission and the Gaston City Police Department worked together on that.
And I also might add, the bomb squad goes out pretty often. Anytime they see, like, I'm thinking the last incident was a package left in one of our banks here behind the bush or something. They went out and checked that. So they do use this equipment, and it is really up-to-date equipment they're going to get, and we really need something like this for the protection of the citizens and also for the people on the bomb squad. The Police Department will submit an update to the Justice Department to complete this grant. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing acceptance, application and acceptance of a JAG grant.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussion? I think we finished the discussion already. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Next one's number 12, resolution authorizing inter-local agreement between the City of Gaston, Edgewall County Commission, and Edgewall County Sheriff's Department. This agreement relates to the JAG grant as described in item number 11, which we just talked about. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any more discussion? Clerk, would you please take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We're under new business today.
I have one, Mr. President, Mr. Acting President. It's a request by Parks and Recreation. It's a resolution approving issuance of a special event alcoholic beverage license for raging Cajun swamp parter to be held at the Pittman on August 26, 2021. Asking for unanimous consent to bring it up today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This is a resolution authorizing the donation of some surplus computers to a nonprofit organization, the Versailles Christian Institute of Learning, care of Glenda Sarita Jackson. Again, five surplus computers from the city. I ask for immediate consideration.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
Will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any further new business? That brings us down to number 14, department reports, committee boards. Craig Scott wants to talk to us about community Thanksgiving events.
There. Thank you, Mr. President, and council members, and Mr. Mayor. I'm Craig Scott, Director of the Gaston Public Library, but I'm not here on library business. I'm representing the Community Thanksgiving Board of Directors. Along with me is Darlene Harkrow and the rest of our board right here. I want to mention, last year with the pandemic, we made a decision. We got some good legal advice that we should not carry forward with community Thanksgiving. You all know the event. It started out of New Liberty Church over in East Gaston in 1998. It grew from the church over to Donahue Elementary School for a couple of years, then to Convention Hall, and then to the venue. But last year with the pandemic, our group was not organized under United Way. A lot of folks thought that we were. We were not under United Way. They were our fiscal agent only. We were not under any other organization. It was us as a committee. And fortunately, unfortunately, if someone had died last year due to COVID that could have been attributed to our Thanksgiving meal, we were on the hook. So we've grown up. This past year, we've grown up. We have organized. We've incorporated. We have a Board of Directors. We have bylaws. We are ready, and this is going to be a bigger and better event than ever before. We are shooting for 7,000. In 2019, it was almost 6,800. We're going to shoot for 7,000 this year. So we're looking for your support, the support of the community, and November 25th at the venue, Community Thanksgiving is back. Darlene?
First off, I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council. Y'all have been a huge, huge reason. We're a success, and I want to thank each one of you from the bottom of our heart because you make it possible for us to reach into this county and be able to meet the needs of people, not only physical by feeding the hungry, but also by feeding their spiritual just by spending time and having that whole group of, as he said, 6780 folks come together and have a family to somebody to share with on Thanksgiving meal on Thanksgiving Day. So thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Think y'all, while you're sitting down, I'd like to say that it takes a lot of volunteers and a lot of people behind the scenes to do this. There's prep during the week for it, and then there's all kinds of volunteers there giving the food out Thanksgiving Day, and it's just a wonderful event. And a lot of people wouldn't have a meal on Thanksgiving Day if it wasn't for this, and we sure do appreciate everything y'all do. This brings us down to citizens' requests. Gina Hollingsworth wants to talk about citizenship, potential industries, and a better understanding of the community. Ms. Hollingsworth, before we start, I'd like to say you can't talk about anybody up here. You cannot mention any names, anything to that effect. If you'll give the city clerk your name and address, please.
Okay. I'm Jenna Hollingsworth from 112 Merritt Circle in Gaston.
You might want to pull your mic down a little bit where we can...
Is that what, bring light on?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm glad that I got to follow the Community Thanksgiving Committee because that's just kind of follows up on what I want to talk about. I'm here today to speak on the meaning of citizenship. The word citizenship is simply defined in Webster's as membership in a community. If we look at the definition of citizenship as a sense of belonging to a group, we gain an understanding of community as more broad than simple geographical proximity. In the early 1950s, my grandfather moved his family to a small duplex in downtown Gaston. He relocated here from Houston, Mississippi, and worked at the Coussa Pop Shop. My great-grandfather had told him of this job opportunity. He was employed at the Gaston Water Plant and lived directly across the railroad tracks from the steel plant on Sheahan Avenue, where he remained until he passed away in the early 80s. My grandfather worked and saved until he was able to build a modest home in Rainbow City located near the Gaston Airport in 1965. My grandfather went to work for the City of Gaston Street Department after the closing of the Coussa Pop Shop, repairing Gaston Streets, drainage ditches, sidewalks, until his untimely death in 1989. He is buried at Crestwood Cemetery. My father, my daddy, worked for Pepsi-Cola when he met my mom. She was a student at Gaston High School. They married and moved to a duplex on Christopher Avenue, and he later worked at the steel mill and then to Goodyear, where he remained until his retirement after 40 years of service. His parents, my grandparents, owned a small grocery store on South Levitt Street and lived in the back of the store. They later moved to a small house directly across the street from Goodyear on Megan Boulevard. My father worked and saved, and he also built a modest home next door to my grandparents near the Gaston Airport in 1966. I, along with my siblings, was born at the Holy Name of Jesus Hospital in Gaston. On Sundays, we attended church in downtown Gaston, and on Saturdays, we shopped downtown on Broad Street. After high school, I attended Gaston State Community College and graduated in marketing management and worked at the Gaston Mall. After my husband and I married, we purchased our first home in downtown Gaston on Slack Street. Several years into our marriage, I went back to school at Gaston State and received my degree as a registered nurse. I worked at both Gaston Hospitals, as well as a large surgical practice in Gaston. When my grandmother passed away in 2004, my husband and I moved to her home on Still Station Road. We have spent several years updating it, making improvements, and when my son married several years ago, we moved back to Gaston, where we currently live in District 4, and allowed our son to move to my grandparents' home with his wife. My daddy still lives in his home next door. The reason I'm sharing my personal history with you guys today is because over the last 10 months, I've been referred to as an outsider, among other things. My character, my integrity, have been put into question. This all because I pose something that I felt would jeopardize my community, along with my personal property. I simply cannot stand by silently and watch the work that generations before me, that my family, myself, my neighbors, their parents, their grandparents have invested in to be compromised. I, along with thousands of other citizens with similar stories, feel that that is exactly what's happening. Citizens who have ties all over the community, we are being told that we don't matter. The very people who made this community what it is today and what it can be tomorrow, we were told to be quiet. The people who live in Gaston, who grew up in Gaston, the tire builders, the steel plant workers, the healthcare providers, those who work in Gaston currently, who own businesses in Gaston, who eat and shop with their families, who attend church in Gaston, we're being told that we do not matter, like we are nothing but a bunch of troublemakers. I'm asking all of you today, please put your personal feelings aside about this person or that person. Stop trying to determine motives. Consider what it means to be a citizen. It is not about us and them because us and them are you and me. You are citizens in this community. You're not just elective officials. You represent a district, and you can also be supportive of community at the same time. Again, if we look at the definition of citizenship as a sense of belonging to a group, we gain an understanding of community as more broad than simple geographical proximity. Thank you.
Ms. Hollingsworth, I appreciate you coming today and telling us your feelings and your thoughts, and it takes a lot for a person just to stand up there and say what they mean, you know, or, you know, say their feelings and stuff. Can I ask you a personal question now?
Yes, sir.
What was your grandfather's name that worked at the city?
Herbert Foster.
Herbert.
They called him Slugger.
Oh, yes, ma'am. I worked with him in, I started in 1979. I couldn't remember who he was, but since you said Slugger, I remember. He was a nice guy. Didn't he live on Slack one time?
Um, no. He lived on Turntown Street.
Okay. Yeah, I knew it was that close. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That brings us down to Joseph Cole. He wants to speak about neighborhood crime and COVID funds. Joe, as you're coming, you know you can't speak about anybody up here, call them by name or any of that kind of stuff. You've been with us a lot of times, and I do want to tell you that I missed you last week, and I told your son that I spoke to one day last week that you had, that was one strike against you. You ain't got but two more before you strike out. And when you see him, he'll tell you I told him that.
I know he will. Mr. President, pro temp, council members, Mr. Mayor, there has been an uptick in violence in the neighborhood, and specifically the black neighborhood. Counselor Word had a meeting on this about two weeks ago, and I want to piggyback on this matter. It's the situation now that people in the community are very fearful. People have gotten so brazen that they are shooting in the daytime, killings are going on, and when the police come out to investigate this, you have people that will not give information because some of them are afraid and others say they would not be snitched. I do realize that money cannot solve all problems, but on this particular problem, I think it can help. I know the city has about been awarded 24 or 25 million dollars in COVID fund, and I'm asking this council and the mayor to consider $200,000 of that amount. Of the 200,000, 150,000 would go for signing bonuses for individuals who want to become firefighters and also police officers. We do know that the police force is 18 members short, and I don't know how many it takes to get into a critical situation, but I believe we're in that situation, and people in the streets know this as well, because they know when the police come through, they know when they don't come through. And it's particularly bad in the black areas because we having shootings, we having killings, and I think this could help in that matter. The other $50,000 would go for crime stoppers, a tipster line. If anyone should call in and give information that will lead to the arrest and conviction of a person, that individual would get $1,000 or $2,000 or whatever amount you come up with. And if you were to do that, you would be surprised how many snitches there are in Gaston because money has a tendency to loosen the tongue. So we just want something done because we need help, and the people are really concerned. The other side of this matter is, I think the city should consider neighborhood associations. I brought this matter before the council some years ago. I gave you the information on how to do this, but I'm sure all of you threw it away because I hadn't heard anything about it until this day. But if you had neighborhood associations, you would have a president and a secretary in each neighborhood, and they would deal with neighborhood affairs. That way, we can have better communication with the neighborhood and also the police and also with other officials. And this could also help in the overall where the communities can get together. We also need neighborhood watch in all these communities. If people see something, they say something. We need to get, you know, instead of fighting against each other, we need to work together because crime hurts everybody. And so people are fearful, people are afraid, and I believe if we take this step, it's not going to alleviate it, but I think it would help tremendously. And finally, Mr. President, pro temp, so the bell's not going to ring on me. I have come before this council speaking about diversity on the police department, diversity in the fire department, and diversity in the city, but it's one other area that needs diversity, and that's the Gaston City Council. No reflection on the men, but we need more women on the council. So I'm going to encourage, because they run everything else, so they can come here and run the council. So I'm appealing to women to run for the council because we need men and women, and we all need to work together to solve the problems that we have. Thank you very much for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Joe, Mr. Cole, I'll call you. I appreciate your stance and everything you come and said to us today. Violence is not in one community. It's in all of our communities. There's shooting going on in everywhere here in Gaston, Edgewall County, you know, the whole state of Alabama, and I appreciate you coming and bringing that to our attention. I didn't want everybody to think that I was getting on Joe a while ago when I gave him that one strike. I mean, Joe's been friends since 67, and me and his son's friends too, so I didn't want y'all to think I was just getting on to be getting on him because Joe knows when I'm serious and when I'm not serious. I appreciate you, Joe.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman.
That brings us down to remarks by the mayor and council. Council Wilson, do you want to go first today?
Yeah, the only thing I'll say to Mr. Cole's comments is I agree that violence is an issue in any community when you have these upticks, but to me, it's about a master plan. It's about a comprehensive plan. I don't think it's just about police patrol and, you know, the law enforcement side of it. We've seen, I mean, the United States and even in Alabama, we have more people in prison than we've ever had. You know, it's not as simple as arresting people that commit crimes. I do like the idea of a neighborhood watch, but I think it's a comprehensive master plan approach to fix problems like that. It goes down to cutting the grass on vacant lots, making sure the lights work on every street, making sure that the sewer systems drain properly in neighborhoods. All of those things contribute to people's community, sense of community, I guess is what I would say. So, you know, for me, I think it's about the biggest role that a neighborhood association can play is bringing all of those different components of the city together to address something one by one. And one of the things that I've seen that's been successful in other communities is kind of these rolling focuses. You know, we see even with the, even with the Public Works Department, you know, they kind of try to divide their time up every week into all seven districts. You know, Mr. Harbison in the Building Department when addressing nuisance abatement issues, they're dealing with these things and trying to, they're overwhelmed with the number of issues they have to deal with. In some communities, I've seen it be successful where you kind of go one district at a time, and you get everybody's attention at the same table. You get everybody around the same table, and you kind of do a blitz in that community, and you get it back to a level to where it can be maintained by those neighborhood associations and by the citizens, because sometimes it's just overwhelming when there's so many abandoned houses, there's so many broken windows, you know, that it's almost too much, and people kind of give up on that sense of community. But if we can make these pushes where we go in and try to rebuild these things all at once and get them, and have a noticeable difference, where everybody in the community comes out the next day and says, holy cow, all the lights are fixed on the street, all the lawns are, or all the, you know, nuisance grass has been cut, maybe that's the first step to kind of spark that sense of community that will encourage more relationships. So I'm all about a master plan for how we approach situations like this, but as I said at Councilman Worthy's meeting, I think it goes beyond just having more police patrol in the area. And I think you would agree with that, too. That wasn't a contradiction. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you. President Cannon, echo Jason's comments. I think it would be wise to, you see other cities with community presence. Just recently, Judge Scott Hassel has announced a program kind of like that with, for mental health. A lot of calls that the police go on involve mental health issues, and so I think this $24 million that the City of Gaston has received, I'm going to be looking at, and have been looking at, how can we best spend that money to combat that problem? That involves a lot of our calls. We also have calls where the fire department goes out. They take these trucks, big ladder trucks that get maybe two, three miles to the gallon, and they go to a house where it's a slip and fall issue, or maybe it's a heart attack. It's not a fire. I don't think that's the best use of that fire truck. It costs too much to operate, so some of this money could be used to maybe purchase either four-wheel drive trucks or trucks that would be more capable for like a paramedic and another firefighter to go to those calls and to better utilize how we respond. When that ladder truck's at somebody's house, they can't respond to a fire because they have to stay at that location until that situation is resolved. So kind of in Councilman Wilson's comments, I think that's, we're reading the same stories and articles in other cities where that's what other cities are doing, so I really want to look at that. I appreciate the comments this morning. Thank you very much. One of my constituents, very, very heartfelt, and I'm certainly listening, as I've said from the beginning, listening to not just my constituents in District 4, but really to everybody. If you go back and look, and some of you I've responded to in emails and some I have not, it's just some of us, just it's too voluminous. There's too many. I just can't answer all of them, but I've said consistently, I'll listen to my constituents. I'll do my own research, and I will never vote to bring anything to Gaston that would harm Gaston or the surrounding community. So I've said that for nine or 10 months, and I'm still saying that. I'm working on my research. I've concluded that, and I am putting it in hopefully a concise format. There's a lot of data, so I'm working on that, and hopefully in the coming... There's a lot of data, so I'm working on that and hopefully in the coming days, we'll be able to share with all of you what I've found and what I've discovered. And that's going to be a pretty open-palmed report. I'm neither for or against anything, I'm just going to present information and let you decide and let you communicate to me how you would, how you feel about that. So, that's kind of where that sits. I think that's the fair way to do it. You know, we all have our personal opinions, but when you sit up here, when you're an elected official, you have your personal opinion, but you have your official opinion, which I represent the constituents of District Four and that's who I think I'm most responsible to. Then the next circle would be the citizens of Gaston and then the next circle is the rest of Etowah County and even folks in other counties. So, I certainly respect that and I certainly respect everyone's opinion. I'm just, I think I just drew the map for you of kind of where my thought process is, but I certainly care about people in Rainbow City and Southside and Natale and Altoona and Ballplay. I have a lot of friends in all those cities that I just mentioned, so I have no desire to do anything that would bring any harm or any kind of critical issues to the city of Gaston or to the county of Etowah. I don't know how else to state that any plainer. I've been saying that for nine or 10 months, so I'm just going to continue to say that and I hope that you hear it because that's the truth, that's how I feel. Also, today, everybody knows at 4 o'clock, we're having a public meeting. It's very important that you come and you attend and hear about this American Rescue Plan, $24 million. Keep in mind, the county gets, I think, 19.8 million, so you should also be attending their meetings. And then each city receives a certain amount of money based on that. I think I've counted 100, added up 154 million dollars, I think is what it is, is coming to Etowah County with all of our cities and the county. What a great opportunity, y'all, to reimagine Gaston and reimagine Etowah County. This is a once in probably a millennium opportunity where we're going to have this opportunity. But I would encourage you to look and see, there are certain guidelines and rules. It's not just, we don't, none of us will have that money in our operating account where we can just spend it however we want to. There's certain restrictions, kind of along the community development block grant lines, the CDBG lines. It's going to be in lower socio-economic areas is where most of the money's going to have to be spent. I think there's around 14 categories that you have to abide by. I've written down a list of ideas since this became knowledgeable that we're going to have this money and a lot of my ideas don't qualify for the rules. So, I'm sure you're going to run into the same thing. We all have thoughts of how we could spend $24 million, but by federal law and state law, we can only spend it how the Treasury Department guidelines stipulate. So, there's going to be forms for you to fill out, to make suggestions, and that'll last, I think, and you'll hear today, but it's going to last for, oh, I don't know, a week or so, maybe longer for the community to have input. So, we certainly want to hear your thoughts and we want to know your desires of how you see this money, how it could be best invested in our community to make a major impact for decades to come. When I think about this, I think about the WPA money from the 30s. You know, we've got the amphitheater and Murphy Stadium and the wall going up to Nakalula Falls. There are some things that were built almost 100 years ago and it's still here. I envision that kind of residual effect on this $24 million. We need to spend it to where in generations to come, people will be able to see and they'll go, "Oh yeah, that was that COVID money," or "That was that CARES money," or however it's going to be referred to in the distant future. So, get your thinking caps on and tell us what you think. Looking forward to hearing about it. Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. Craig Scott, you still here? Craig, thank you and your team for what y'all do for the Community Thanksgiving. It's obviously just a wonderful event, but y'all, Craig Scott did something for our city and our county with the census. Craig stepped forward and kind of grabbed that by the horns and, Craig, I read it now, I don't remember, but we ranked Gaston, Etowah County ranked very high in our success rate and that's due in large part to you and your efforts. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you for, because you put in a lot of work on that. So, thank you very much. So, that means a lot. And I forget the money that, you know, each person, it was so many millions of dollars in federal funding that it represented, or each percentage point. So, you really did a great job in that. Thank you very much. Sure. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Councilman Cannon. So, again, not to belabor, not to belabor the point, but I do think it's important to recognize Craig and the work that he did with the census effort. Not very many, something as benign and mundane as that whole exercise generally doesn't get the attention that it deserves. It's very important, but people just overlook the importance of it and it's great when people like Mr. Scott take the bull by the horns and run with that effort. So, we appreciate you. This community should be thanking you for the effort that you engaged in. As we look at cities that have been successful with fighting some of the upticks in criminal activity and things of that nature, there are two things that generally kind of jump out at you and that's social maturity and citizen responsibility. I've often said that if you are an individual and every time there's an issue in your community and you look at your elected official for the resolution or as the centerpiece of your resolution, then you're missing it. Obviously, your elected official is elected to support and help and advocate, but at the end of the day, when you highlight those good communities that exist around us, there's a level of social maturity that exists there and there's a level of citizen responsibility that exists there. And that's, those are two things I really think we need to make sure that we drive because I agree, you know, just having, you know, we need additional police officers for sure, but just having additional police officers is not going to fix it. We definitely need to display in this community a level of social maturity and citizen responsibility that's going to get us to the next level of being the kind of community that we need to be. To Mr. Cole's point, I actually like the tip line, hotline idea. I think that's a good one and a point well made. You know, people forget that whole, that whole snitching standard when you start flashing money at them. They forget that very quickly. Says a lot about society, but that's another discussion. Of course, the neighborhood watch mechanism has been in place for years. I've been fortunate, I have a number of neighborhood watch groups in my district and honestly, there could be more. We could stand to have more. And for those that don't know, our police officers go out and they help to facilitate the establishment of those neighborhood watch groups. My parents actually live in a community where there's one, that it's a very significant one and I honestly feel safer when I visit them than I do a lot of places because, and they actually have a city employee that's pretty prominent within that neighborhood watch group. So, there's some opportunities, like with a lot of things, there's some opportunities to use mechanisms that already exist. Neighborhood watch is one. Neighborhood associations, you know, I think with the timing of what's going on in Surfside, what's going on in Florida and how, you know, some of the negative aspects of neighborhood associations are being highlighted. I think we have to retool that one. I like the concept, but I think we have to retool that one to make sure it's deployed appropriately. But those were some great suggestions, I think, you know, but all of that involves, you know, and please understand the theme, all of that involves neighborhood participation. I am, I'm one, and these guys can tell you this, and it may make me unpopular amongst my peers, but I can tell you that one of the things that's great about our, about politics is that it involves everybody. But one of the things that's also negative about politics is that it involves everybody because many times, you know, we engage in a popularity contest every four years and you bring somebody into this, into this position that's not qualified. You bring somebody into this position that doesn't know what the heck they're talking about, but they were very popular during that election cycle. So, educate yourself and challenge these people that are running for office to make sure they know what they're talking about. Because I've been a voter much longer than I've been an elected official and I've seen it happen way too often, that you get people in these elected offices that don't know what the heck they're talking about. So, again, let's make sure that we hold these people up to a much higher standard than what they, than what we may have in the past. And some of the things that we need if we, when we do that, some of the things that we need and some of the things that we desire as constituents of this city will come to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Williams. Councilman Worthing?
First, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Scott, Craig Scott, not only for the census, but the Community Thanksgiving dinner and to the whole board and also Ms. Annie Gaiden. I don't see her here, but thank you to her also. Y'all do a great deal every year, been doing it for years and our community is really appreciative because there's a lot of people out there that goes without a Thanksgiving meal, a meals every day if it weren't for people like you all and the way of the cross feeding every day. So, my hat is off to you all. Thank you so much. Speaking of crime, we had two more shootings last night, so it's not getting any better and my understanding is we about to lose some more officers also about to leave. So, it's going to come to a critical point and it's just not about the money and I've been saying this since I've been on this council, it's also about the insurance. Nobody's going to come here and work 25 years and leave with no insurance with the city not paying one bit penny of their insurance. I'm sorry. That might have been a good idea back then, but my understanding was that it was because the payroll for personnel was over 70%. Well, guess what? We're at over 70% now. So, we got to do something different. We got to think outside the box and like I said before, it's not just on us, it's on the community also because we need diversity in the police department and the fire department. Speaking of crime, and I sent the email and I've been getting complaints about a particular spot at Spring in Tuscaloosa, using it as an all-night club, after-hours club and the people in the neighborhood can't sleep and the house got shot up, the car got shot up and the people are not living in one of the houses anymore. They have to, you know, stay in a hotel because of all this going on. So, I want the attorney to see what we could do about closing it because we cannot continue having that in our community. And I'm sorry, we can find other businesses to put in our community besides clubs and all-night joints. We got to do better. When is our community going to get sick and tired of being sick and tired? And just like Mr. Cole said, the police officers cannot be everywhere all the time. So, when we're not there and we don't observe what happened, we need somebody to speak up. Because if it's your loved one been shot and laying there, you want somebody to tell. I've said that at the meeting. So, I don't understand this generation, I really don't, but we're going to have to figure it out. And then, also, the meeting tonight from 4 to 6 about the American Rescue Plan, please come over to the venue and then I'm going to talk about the rendering plan a little bit. Now, after Representative Adah Hope sent that letter, that may have killed it, I don't know, but the rumors are that they want to put it somewhere else in our community. And when I say our community, I'm talking about the black and poor community and we're not going to stand for it either. We're not going to stand for it and we need to come together and work with the opposition group because if it ain't good enough to go down there, it ain't good enough to come here. It's simple. And the ones that's going around supporting it in our community, if they still supporting it after this, you know they taking money from pilgrims pride. And our community is just as good as anybody else's community. So, I believe that's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Worthing. Mayor?
Yeah, I want to say a little bit. We, city, we have a lot of jobs that are open. You know, when I was growing up, my daddy had a heart attack when I was about 10, 12. My first job was at some of you old folks.
It was a fruit stand, an athlete gardener. I worked there five nights a week for 50 cents an hour and I always worked ever since then. Two jobs most of the time, not bragging on myself, that's just what we had to do. But anyway, if kids don't learn some work ethic, to show up and be where you're supposed to be, when you're supposed to be there and do some things like that, when they get 18, they ain't going to be doing much anyway. And so, I'm saying, you know, you need to check with what we got listed at City Hall on jobs and we always hiring and there's some always leaving and we don't, it's nothing, it's not breaking bricks or anything like that. There's some good jobs and some of them are fun jobs, but you might want to keep a check on the board on what we have listed and it might be good because if they don't learn some work ethic, when they get 20 years old, you might still be feeding them and washing their cars for them or something, I don't know. But anyway, I just think that we could do that, that'd be good if you could push them a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, I want Mr. Scott, I appreciate y'all and everything y'all do for the Community Thanksgiving meal. A lot of times I forget what goes on from one year to the next, but I think last year we delivered some meals for Councilman Worthing. Didn't y'all have a little Thanksgiving giveaway? I say little, it was what, 750, 800 meals?
Uh huh. That reminds me of Mr. Tanya Baker and her group did that.
Okay. Want to make sure we gave them kudos for that right there. It was, you know, they just kind of stepped in there, it carved over everywhere, they could just give some meals for the people that wasn't going to have any and we delivered some and we used to deliver for, we have it over there at the venue or at Convention Hall, we used to deliver meals and stuff over there and we appreciate everything everybody did last Thanksgiving for the people. I do want to say that I think that when I was growing up, working for the city, I started in 1979. I didn't make any money, had insurance, but I didn't make any money. I had to work two or three jobs to, just so my kids, my two kids and wife could eat. And I'm hoping in this budget, we can pay our employees more to get, you know, they don't have to do that. I mean, I did that and the mayor was talking about how he did that, but I'm hoping we can pay our employees a decent wage where that they won't have to work two or three jobs to get by and also that they can spend more time with your family because when you're away at them two or three jobs, that's taking away your family, from your family. I had to do it when I was working for the city, but hope we can overcome that and, you know, pay them some decent wages, what we're doing now. We know we're top-heavy. We've had people come in and tell us we're top-heavy, we're over 70% payroll right now of our budget, we're operating on 30%. I know it's going to go up, but when we took office and when I took office in 2006, I think we had 1 and 1/2 million dollars in reserve. Is that correct, Mayor? Wasn't it 1 and 1/2? But I think that's about what it was and since then, we're, I don't know, we're from 15 to 17 million now and there's some way we could use some of that money for some raises for these employees, not a one-time bonus. A one-time bonus is good when you get it for maybe two or three months and then, you know, you go back to what you was making, you don't have any more money. So, I think we need to concentrate too on hourly wages and get hourly wages up where we can get people to want to work for the city and not go to these other places and work. I'm a firm believer, if you pay them more, they're going to stay here and they're going to work. We've, nobody ever talks about the extra benefits we have. If you come to work for the city, excuse me, if you come to work for the city and you're in management and say you're making $50,000, after five years, you get 2% of that every month, whatever your gross pay is, if it's $5,000, you get 2% of that, an extra check. 10 years, you get 4%, 15 years, 6, 20 is 8, and when you get 25... And when you get 25 years with the city, you get 10% of what you made that month, an extra check. And that comes out to a lot of money. If you're making $5,000 that month, you get enough, if you gross $5,000 that month, you'll get a $500 check extra. So, you know, we never talk about that issue, but that's something we do, you know, around here. I do want to talk about the public meeting tonight from four to 6:00 p.m. at the venue. It's going to allow the public an opportunity to provide input on how the COVID funds could be spent. And there's $24 million of COVID local financial recovery funds. You did hear me say how it could be spent. I know everybody has a wish list, they, you know, want stuff, but, you know, we have restrictions on how it could be spent. So, everybody come out tonight if you want to have input in this. But just remember, there's rules and regulations how this money could be spent, so you can turn in how you think it needs to be. And we've got some people that, you know, can tell you the rules and stuff you have to go by. They'll be there tonight from four to six. Does anybody else here have anything? Be in no further, I'm sorry, ma'am, we don't let anybody speak from the podium, I'm sorry. I mean, from down there. I can talk to you later, after this.
I'm disabled. I'm here because I can't give any help.
What'd she say? Do, I'll talk to you after, ma'am, okay? I'll be glad to talk with you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Absolutely.
We adjourn.